Happy to do it.
No, not chaff, not just. Yeah, he didn't go, thank you, too much.
She wanted to, they didn't know if you get them. They want to do a small parade, we don't get them.
Call the meeting door. Good heavens, Father, we thank you for this day in the city in which we live, guide us this afternoon as we make our decisions. Christ name. This is the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting of the Noonan City Council. You have the minutes from the regular meeting of August the twenty-third, twenty twenty-two before you. Entertainer motion, we adopt.
I'll make that motion.
Second, motion is second, we adopt as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign, thank you. The next item is also minutes, they're from the special call meeting on August the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Entertainer motion.
I'll make the second.
Motion is second, we adopt as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda, several items of board and commission appointments. The first one actually is mine. I'd like to appoint Ian Goldenberg to serve a three-year term on the Noonan Youth Activities.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign, Mr. Goldenberg is here today, we appreciate your willingness to serve, thank you. The next item, I keep Noonan beautiful, this is Mr. Alexander.
Yes, sir. I had her name here, Miss Angela. Sir, could we come back to that?
Sure.
I have her name and I apologize.
The next, Mr. Schell, Cultural Arts Commission.
Put that on the next agenda, please.
All right, thank you. And then the next, oh, well, all the rest, actually, are Ethics Commission, Mr. Alexander.
Yes, sir, I'd like to renominate Mr. Ryan Freeman.
All right.
Second.
Motion is second, we renominate Mr. Ryan Freeman to the Ethics Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. The next two are mine, if you can put them on the next agenda, Mr. DeBose, the next two are yours.
If you would put my two on the next agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Correcto.
I'd like to reappoint Mr. Carl Green.
Second, motion is second, we reappoint Mr. Carl Green to the Ethics Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign, Mr. Correcto.
And as well, Mrs. Krista Frost.
All right, second, motion is second, we reappoint Ms. Krista Cross, uh, Frost to the Ethics Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign, Mr. Schell.
Yes, would you, I'd like to appoint Dr. Tom Freeman.
Second, motion is second, we reappoint Mr. Tom Freeman to the Ethics Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign, Mr. Schell, you have one other.
Yes, Mr. Chip Baron.
All right, second. Motion is second, reappoint Mr. Chip Baron to the Ethics Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carried. Going back up to Mr. Alexander.
Yes, sir, I'd like to nominate Miss Angela Lewis. And she lives on Spring Street is her address, to keep Noonan beautiful.
Okay, here the motion is second, any, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you. Thank you, lady and gentleman. The next item on the agenda today, Mr. Thomason is going to give us an annual report from the Downtown Development Authority. How are you today, sir?
Good, thank Keith. Thank you, City Councilman. Jim Thomason, I am a resident of Noonan and we own and manage property in downtown Noonan. And I've been a member of the Downtown Development Authority, maybe five or six years. I want to introduce a couple of people that are here. Abigail Strickland is right behind me, she's been with us about five years. And as y'all know, really what I'm going to show y'all, Abigail did every bit of it and Jesse did some. Jesse's not here, I don't think, right? But her assistant Jesse has done the work and we are the benefactors of all their hard work. And so as we go through this, you can really just thank, thank those two ladies. They report to Hasko and Hasko, thanks for all your help as well. We've got some board members here, Ray DeBose is our chairman, Keith Brady is on the, on the authority. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, the presentation, let's see if I can work through this here. Y'all are more technical than I am on a daily basis. All right, I want to just go through a couple little points as we go through this deck. One of the things that we, we, we do, we offer facade grant program. And so when you see awnings, particularly, it's really awnings, but sometimes now lately it's been transit windows and things like that. We offer a match up to thousand dollars. Yep, so up to a thousand dollars to either tenants or landlords to upgrade their, their outside of their properties. And that's, that's a very popular and hopefully it gets used a lot, we encourage people to use it. One of the things that we did this year is we included the rear of the buildings as part of the facade grant. And so you've, you're beginning to see some, Wadsworth Alley is one that, that is beginning to get some attention, some love. The one behind the Knife and Stone is a big alley back there that hopefully will get some love over time. And we're working on the Carnegie Library, Carnegie, Carnegie Alley right now, behind the Carnegie Library, there you go, I got it out. So we'll see a great improvement on that. So hopefully, again, people will take advantage of that and beautify some of those areas that are really great gathering spaces. So if you're downtown, I tell you one, just go to the coffee, go to the donut shop, Airline, walk out the back door and you're in the alley and you can actually sit and enjoy a cup of coffee and have a donut. So kind of you'll begin to get the feeling of what we could have downtown as we expand that program. So that was, that's been an exciting one. Bike racks, we, we, I think Bike Cahueta did those, but we've got three of them up. And so we participated in, in the location of those and the assistance of those. So we'll see how that grows, certainly we're seeing a lot more bikes in Noonan. All right, let's go over to some impact. The, the impact number of twelve million dollars, that, as you see at the very bottom there, that number is taken from building permits, from sales numbers, from business license numbers. So that, that is just the money that comes into our, we don't have a map, do we? We should almost have a map, I thought about, anyway. But next time, next year we'll have a map for you, we'll show you the area. But it's a, it's not a huge area really of the DDA when you think about how big Noonan is. So that's a very significant, in my opinion, investment in our small, in our, in the small area. That number is, is taken back up, it went down a little bit with COVID. But we think this year, we hadn't seen the numbers yet, but our estimate that that number will be even higher than it is today. And I guess that's what tells us is, and y'all see it, you know, people are enjoying downtown Noonan and they're putting their money into it. And, and that's just a good indicator of that when you see that number go up. So if you want to know an elevator pitch of what DDA is about, we can look at these two goals. And, you know, it's add, expand business and commercial spaces to meet priority needs identified in the community survey. So that's our goal. We want to have space available for those people that want to be in our area. And then we want to assist in those people that want to build space in any way we can. And the other goal is add outdoor activity spaces and features. And you're seeing that, again, with the alley work that we're doing as well as the bike racks we mentioned. The event schedule, so this is huge and Abigail and Jesse do such a great job. And I won't go down all these lists, but I hope you have, have come to some of these in downtown Noonan. The most successful program that we have of all of these is our Market Day. And we have about sixty vendors, we've expanded that this year, which is a challenge because it's around the square. So we're trying to squeeze in as many people as we can. We have a waiting list for that, we actually vet it, correct? Yeah, so I mean, this is so popular that, and we try to limit it to, tell me if I'm wrong on all this, but, Abigail, but we try to limit it to really local things, local produce, local artists, local stuff going on as much as we can. That one is, runs April through December and it's the first Saturday of every month. And that concludes my report, do y'all have any questions?
Anyone, Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Thomason, thank you so much for what y'all do, you do a great job. And it might be a question for the staff, how can we get more bike racks? Would that be with the DDA or is it through the city or? I know there's other.
Yeah, Councilman Alexander, we, we have a program right now to place bike racks throughout the entire, not only downtown area, but the city. Take advantage of the link connecting into downtown. We have three now in strategic locations and we've highlighted with partnership of Bike Cahueta and the Main Street Unit Program, potential future locations. So there are funding partners out there that have come and stepped up to help, Noonan Utilities is one, Bike Cahueta is another. And we're going to continue to place those strategically in places throughout the city.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kramer.
You're welcome, thank you.
I love that, that question, that's a good one. Anything else?
Yes, I have a question. Under goal number one, on your bullet point, number, number three, I was really intrigued by create and welcome incentive packages or package. Can you dive a little bit deeper into that?
I'm going to dive real deep, Abigail. Can I have, can I have Abigail come up and, and, and give us the?
All right, very good.
Yes, currently we do have a welcome incentive package for the DDA, it's on our Main Street website. We use it to recruit businesses as well as tell them about all the things that we offer at the Main Street Program. Of course, right now it's very difficult to recruit businesses in downtown because as you can see, it's already thriving. And we have very little vacancy in our district, but yes, we do have a welcome incentive package. And it tells them about DDRLO funds, historic tax credits and things of that nature.
Very good, thanks.
While I got you up there, I saw there was another slide that we kind of slid, we slid over real fast, what's next? So what are we looking for, anything exciting and new this coming year?
Oh, there you go, there you go.
Yeah, so what's next is actually the next slide, it's our strategic plan for the next two years. And then, of course, that's including, we're currently in the process of updating our downtown design guidelines. Hopefully we'll have a final product for everyone to view soon, as well as encouraging downtown outdoor dining and then obviously the project at fifty-seven East Broad.
Excellent, thank you.
Hey, I'll tell you, the design guidelines, that's been exciting to work on. We've taken this document that is, Tracy's in the room. In my opinion, it's very difficult to navigate, near impossible to navigate. And so this new document, I think, is so simple and it's actually going to be one that really is useful for everybody. So I look forward to y'all seeing that, that's been a good, that'll be a good success when we get that finished.
Thank you.
Thanks for the volunteerism.
Thank you, Mr. Thomason, we appreciate that report. And we got a DDA meeting in the morning, bright and early, eight o'clock, right in this room. So if anybody wants to attend, come on down. Next item on the agenda today is by our city manager, presentation of local option sales tax laws.
Mr. Phillips. I didn't know, I've got, this may take a little bit, I don't know if you wanted to flip-flop and take opportunity under your session to do the proclamation week real quick? Or if you want me to continue for the agenda, I'm happy. But my, my presentation may take a little bit of time.
Ladies, let me, let's do you the favor and give you the option.
I just, I just saw that.
That favor word slipped out and then I thought option was better, so we'll do that. Let me read the proclamation for Constitution Week and then I'll have Tammy come up and I'll present it to her. These ladies on the front row, for those of you who don't know, are members of the DAR, the Daughters of American Revolution. And every year, September, Constitution Week, they come and we read a proclamation at the city council meeting. We appreciate their help and their persistence through COVID and all the other things that we've had to continue to be at these meetings. And you will have the option of staying after I read the proclamation, of listening to Mr. Phillips. He's going to be a reporter on the local option sales tax, which I all know, you've read in the paper, is the thing. And, and it's coming for us, but I'll go ahead and read this, this proclamation. Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-two marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it's fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September the seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Keith Brady, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Noonan, do hereby proclaim the week of September the seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I herein too set my hand and calls the seal of the city of Noonan to be affixed the thirteenth day of September in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-two. Ladies, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one thing?
Yes, please, if you'll come to the microphone.
My name is Claudia Johnson, I'm a retired school teacher, taught in Cahueta County for years and years and years. But in case you don't know, we give these little pocket constitutions to all of the fourth grades in Cahueta County. The students get their own copy every year, so anyway, just thought, thought you should know that as a former school teacher.
Thank you. So that gift is at your station, everybody, today. And also, they've given us a quill that is actually a working quill. So all you've got to do is go buy a jar of ink and, right away. Mr. Phillips.
Absolutely, Mayor, Council, citizens' guest. I think it's important today that we take a little bit of time to update not only this body, but the community in terms of the negotiations that you've likely read about in the Times Herald. And that's the negotiations between the county and the cities within Cahueta County, not just Noonan, as we attempt to renegotiate our local option sales tax distribution. So here it is, I'm only, I try not to get too far into weeds, but I do think it's important to have a good understanding of what lost is and the basis of the negotiation before I get into some, where we stand today and where we're potentially going. Honestly, I think most of us probably know by this time what, what is lost. Lost is local option sales tax, a lot of times you hear lost as splosts or elots. Well, that is another one cent tax that is approved by the voters of Cahueta County. But local, the difference between local option sales tax and the splosts or the elots is that the local governments, it's a one cent tax that we use to roll back your mileage rate and also use for our operations. The special purpose local option sales tax only can be used for identified capital projects. It is a special tax district created in one-hundred-and-fifty-nine districts, which is one-hundred-and-fifty-nine counties of this wonderful state, has to be passed by referendum of the voters. See if I can get this, I don't want to go into this, but there are criteria for determining lost. There's actually eight criteria established by the Georgia Statute. These criteria are to be analyzed and used in a determinative distribution. It is a little bit difficult at times because the statute does not go into detail to tell you how to use these criteria, but they are criteria that are listed in the statute. And you'll come back to that in a minute and you'll see why this is very, very important. We want to talk a little bit about, a little bit about the history of lost distributions in Cahueta County. Starting in nineteen ninety-four, there was a distribution formula that was used that was agreed upon between Mayor Brady, he's been a mayor for, for quite a good time here in Noonan, and former chair of Cahueta County, Mutt Hunter, when they agreed that the city should receive one-hundred-and-twenty percent of their population distribution, recognizing the value of the cities to Cahueta County, because we're the daytime service population with the service center and all of those factors that you know that are offered in services inside the cities. So you can see in ninety-four, two thousand and two, and two thousand and thirteen, when we renegotiated the distribution, we used the one-hundred-and-twenty percent method. That was then. You know, obviously I think I've already said how is lost used. It's used for a rollback, as you can see there, under the law for property tax relief and also used to provide local governments and funding of any or all portions of the services that are allowed and stated in the statutes. It's called the supplementary services of the Georgia Constitution. How important is lost? I know this may be hard to see and I don't want anybody to focus on all the details. I think it's important to focus on the number at the very right-hand, bottom right-hand corner, which is called the lost rollback. This particular image right here is the. This particular image right here is the five-year tax digest and history that all taxing authorities, the city of Noonan, all the other cities, Cahueta County, and even the school board, by law have to publish each year before setting our annual mileage rate. For the local governments, for the cities and the county, per the statute, we must show what the value is of our local option sales tax rollback. And you can see right here, for the city of Noonan taxpayer, that value is over 4.7 mils. So what that says, without this local option sales tax, instead of a property tax owner in Noonan paying just over, now I'm gonna go back, sorry, just over three mils, you will be paying 7.8 mils. That's how important the local option sales tax is to you, the property owners, to us as property owners, also in the city of Noonan. We talked about lost being able to be used for our operations here at the city of Noonan. Lost is actually the largest revenue source of the city of Noonan's budget. It is 32% of our budget. That, the lost is the ability to police the streets, keep the community clean, offer you services, these wonderful Main Street programs you just saw that Abigail and Mr. Thompson talked about. But again, it's 32% of our budget. The second largest revenue is our, your property taxes, your ad valorem taxes at 25%. So just by that slot alone, you can see how important the local option sales tax is to our operations. Hit the next slide, Megan. It's wanting to lock up on me a little bit. There you go. Why a new distribution agreement? I, I think this has been pretty much clearly stated in the, in the media. Every 10 years after the census numbers are released by statute, we are required to negotiate a new distribution agreement. Obviously, the census was a little delayed because of the COVID this year, and our deadline to get the distribution certificate signed into the Department of Revenue is December the 30th, at the end of this year. But yeah, the trigger is actually the, the release of the census every 10 years. Okay, what happens without a new agreement? Well, unfortunately, if we do not have a new agreement signed by the end of December 30th of 2022, the local option sales tax, that one penny will go away. What that will mean to you as property owners and shoppers, when you go to the retail stores and you make a taxable purchase, instead of paying 7% at the sales, at the register, you'll be paying 6% at the cash register. However, as you saw, lost is 32% of our budget and we got, this body would have a decision to make. Either you're going to cut about 32% of the services we receive in this community or we're going to find the money. And unfortunately, that lost rollback goes away and apparent place, and I'm not saying this body would, you know, take the full amount, but there's likely going to be a pretty significant recommendation from myself to increase the ad valorem taxes. I don't think that's, there'd be any way to sidestep that issue if local option sales tax were to cease to exist in Cahueta County. This is a very interesting, again, there's a lot of numbers here and I'd be happy to show these to anyone at a later date. What I've done here is I've taken a few scenarios with different property values. And the top column up there is basically property that's only located within the city of Noonan, okay? The bottom column is property that's located in the city of Noonan, but in the city of Noonan, guess what you also do? You pay Cahueta County taxes, correct? So I want to focus on that bottom column there and I want to pull out, for example, the average house in Noonan now is approaching, is probably over $300,000. But I'm going to use a $300,000 example. Of course, a $300,000 house, you only, you only tax them 40% of that, so your taxable value is only $120,000. But today, that $300,000 house, with the current mileage rate set by this body and the Board of Commissioners, would have an annual tax rate, and it's this number right here of $999, just below $1,000. If lost were to go away and if both elected bodies, both taxing authorities, were to decide to replace all of lost with the lost rollback that just disappeared, that same $999 tax bill would go to $881. That's a difference of $882. Let's think about that. With one cent sales tax, that's the equivalent of you going to the cash register and spending $88,200 a year on a one cent sales tax. That shows you how vital lost is because our visitors who are coming from Troop County, Hurd County, Fayette County, and other areas, they're shopping here and thus they're lessening the burden of our property owners for the operations inside the city of Noonan and Cahueta All right, a little, a little bit about the history of, of the negotiations. The, the cities got together and there were representatives, actually, there was an official called meeting of this body, an official called meeting of the county commissioners. And I think maybe Sinoi may have had a quorum too, but there were representatives of all cities and the county president at the first meeting on June 15th. And at that meeting, the cities were unified and they basically presented to the counties, let's continue with our same distribution agreement because it's the sum of a 100-some gain. If there's a winner, if someone takes more, that means there has to be someone who takes less. It's working. The economy in Noonan is strong, so let's just keep it the same. Well, at that particular meeting, the county objected to that particular, particular offer that the cities made, and then we established a committee. And on the committee was a representative of each city and the county at the committee meeting. So at the first committee meeting, and I'll bypass that, that's just a summary of what offer number one was. The county came with their first offer at the committee meeting, and the county came with, to the committee with two options. The first option that the county came to us was let's use only daytime population as the factor to determine the lost distribution. Well, let's go back and when I first started this presentation, there were eight criteria in the law, correct? Using daytime population is only one of the eight criteria. So the cities, the representatives of the cities at that committee meeting pushed back, we objected, saying that it did not recognize all the criteria in the law. So the, so the counties gave us a second option, and that was to also use daytime population, but to use the value of our total tax digest. So they asked us to use two criteria of the eight and that we weight the two criteria 50/50. Obviously, in those situations, the, the cities again objected on the same basis that it didn't recognize the total eight criteria. Again, this is kind of a summary of where those were. I don't want to read all of those, but basically, in the population-only method, you would see the, the city of Noonan would decrease from 3119 to 2911, the decrease a little over 2%. Cahueta County, for example, would increase from 20, from 6141 to 6411, which is an increase of 2.7. In their offer to use population and digest, they would increase to 4.1 and the city would decrease by 3.33%. Again, we objected to this particular proposal. So then the cities came back. We, we came back again with, with, with two options. And in, in addition to recognizing daytime population, I know this can get complicated, digest, we also added in census value for jobs. We added in the commercial tax digest value, not just total tax digest value, because there's a lot of language in the statute that talks about the inherent values of downtowns. Of course, we're just talking about the downtown program again. So we offered two different proposals to the county. Again, they may not have met every one of the eight criteria, but they were getting closer. And then as a result, in both of these situations, the city of Noonan barely had a slight gain in the first one. We went from 3119 to 3127, which is 0.08% increase. In the other option, there was a 0.06. So very, 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 very slight gain in these two proposals. In each of these proposals, Cahueta County was the biggest winner out of all of the cities and the county with a 0.9% increase or 0.79 if they took the other option. Again, there was not a whole lot of swing in either of these proposals, trying to still say, hey, we all win if we don't make drastic changes. Well, the county objected to those and then they came back during our final lost committee meeting, and they just wanted to use another formula. And basically, it put their last proposal, I'll just show you right here, at the highest of any other proposals that we had seen, at 66.21%, which would see them increasing by almost 4.8% and the city decreasing by 2.45%. And based upon this, we decided it was time to go to either arbitration or mediation, which we have, you know, settled on mediation. We'll talk a little bit about that. Some of the county positions, we, we've heard them say, and I think it was even actually an article in the paper recently about, unfortunately, the taxpayers, the citizens being in the middle, but it is about the taxpayers and we're trying to protect you. But the county position that there is an inequity built into lost, the property owners in incorporated areas get a second lost adjustment, which is the rollback that I was referring to, and that can be unfair to the county residents in incorporated areas, in unincorporated areas, that should say. Well, that's true. We do get two rollbacks if you're a property owner in the city of Noonan, but you pay two property taxes. You pay a property tax bill to the city and you pay a property tax bill to Cahueta County. So yes, you get to, and there's no way to avoid that unless there's no mileage rate for either jurisdiction. The second position, and again, I think it was noted recently, because of the increase in population and the increase in cost of service and increase in services, that there is need for additional distribution. We like to point out that the taxpayers that are paying taxes in the city of Noonan are also residents and pay taxes to Cahueta County. So if you're paying taxes and you live in the city of Noonan, you're already part of paying for the increase in the cost of services. There's actually a law called service delivery law that prohibits duplication and double taxation. So that, these are some of the arguments that we're trying to make and when we're trying to, and I hate to use the word argument, it's not, doesn't sound fair, but when we're trying to actually come to a settlement and an agreement on this lost distribution. Again, a couple of slides here in our close. I think we can leave here by stating that all cities in Cahueta County remain unified and agree that we all win by keeping the same lost distribution rates. City of Noonan is willing to keep what we got. We don't need 2%, we don't need 3%, we don't need 5%. I mean, we can all win by keeping the rates that we have, and that's the offer that we originally made at that first meeting on June 15th. How do we all win? Well, look, we've got a strong economy. I just wanted to show this graph in closing, that since we negotiated the last distribution in 2013, from 2013 to today, well, through the end of last year, our sales tax increased by 74%. It basically, the revenue's basically doubled for Noonan, Cahueta County, and other jurisdictions. And it has enabled us to provide good quality services, but we think it's substantial money and we can all win by keeping the same distribution rate. Again, but we haven't been able to settle, so we are heading to mediation. We're going to offer mediation in a little bit different format than normal, and it's going to be held October the 17th at 9:00 a.m. at the Noonan Center located Lower Fayetteville Road. That's the end of my presentation.
Questions?
I have a question, yeah.
One, one question. Great presentation, Mr. Phillips. Thank you so much. You know, you talk about the growth rate from 13 to 22, 74%. Do you have any projections of the growth from 22 to, say, 23? Just one year?
One year is certainly an easier projection to make. In the last two years, let me back up a little bit. Once COVID hit, you may remember, we all were kind of in scramble mode, thinking that we were going to see a major hit in the recession in our tax dollars.
Sure.
I think I even put out an email saying, just be prepared, we're going to finish this year in the red for the first time ever, right? Well, the exact opposite happened. Everyone stayed home and started doing projects, and it hasn't slowed down. The infusion of cash, I know that inflation has caused, the cost of items to go up, but we've seen over a 15% growth in our sales tax collections the last two years.
Right.
Now, I don't believe we're going to maintain, can physically or possibly maintain 15% growth rate, but I think we could safely say we're still going to see a conservative growth rate in the 3% to 5% range.
Right.
I think that's, that's probably realistic. In the history, in, we've, we've gone back over 20 years and we have not seen one single year where we saw a decline in our sales tax collections from the previous year. That's even true during the '09 recession as far as the sales tax was concerned. We did see decreases in our ad valorem property taxes, but actually not in sales tax.
Thank you. And, and what I'm seeing is, like you said, the pie keeps getting bigger. Everybody keeps getting more and more. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
And a comment. Of all the surfaces, services that the county provides as we pay the, the county tax, what services does the city of Noonan receive from Cahueta County for taxes that we pay?
Again, that's, that's a very good question. It's a very, very detailed question, and I'll try to answer it at a, at a higher level. But you are correct. I mentioned that the city property owner in the city of Noonan pays city taxes, right? Also pays county taxes.
Correct.
And up until this year, was paying the county taxes at a higher mileage rate than a, compared to a county taxpayer. This year, they made it equal, and very good for them. I applaud them for, for making that equal.
Just for this year, though, correct?
For this year.
Okay.
But, you know, I mentioned service delivery strategy, and it's, it's an agreement that we, that we come to with the county about services because in, in the city of Noonan, if you call for 911, you call for police service, chief blankets, officers are going to show at your house. If you call 911 and you need fire or first responder services, chief rounds, firemen, first responders are going to show at your house. If you call for code enforcement, city of Noonan is going to show. If you show for animal control, city of Noonan is going to show. If you call for stormwater issues, city of Noonan is going to show. Road maintenance, a pothole, we're going to show. So those are the services that the county are not providing to the property owners in the city of Noonan, but yet our property owners are still paying an equal mileage rate.
Correct, yeah. Thank you. Also wanted to just comment on, of the eight strategies that are proposed and suggest criteria, excuse me, criteria that are suggested to be used by state law, correct? We have attempted, and you have attempted, to include and reach at least four of those criterias as well. And it appears from what I could see in our conversations that the county has only really, at best effort, two. Would that be, can I sum it up that way or is there, I'm trying to get a question in there?
In the lost committee meetings, there was a lot of discussion about the criteria, and I'd be the first to admit that the statute doesn't give you specific guidance on how to use the criteria. So there was a lot of discussion about that. Obviously, things like tax digest and daytime population, they're easy numbers that are sourceable, credible from the Census Bureau, from the Tax Commissioner, and et cetera. I think we did finally come to the conclusion that there were about four, four criteria of those eight that were, that were easily identifiable, and you can see that some of those offers, there were about four of those criteria used.
Right.
Since we have actually gone to, decided we're going to go to mediation, our staff has continued to work to develop verifiable, verifiable, Department of Revenue, the U.S. Census Bureau, Tax Commissioner, Department of Community Affairs, data that clicks off all eight of the criteria, and we're going to be prepared to present our case based upon all eight of the criteria and all eight being equal. You may have seen in my report that there were some proposals for weighting each of some of the criteria, but if you read the statute, the statute doesn't talk about weighting, it just lists all eight of them. So, you know, we'll see a presentation or made from the cities that uses all eight criteria with a verified sources.
And the statute doesn't say, well, we have eight, but you can really only use one. They...
The statute doesn't give you some discretion to negotiate.
But it is a, wouldn't be a far reach to say it's wise to use as many as possible.
As you possibly can.
Anything else?
A quick question for you. I think this might be a little bit quicker. We, as city residents, being county residents as well, county residents that are not inside the incorporated cities, we, we can share each other's services to some degree. You know, we can use the county libraries, they can come in, they use our roads. I mean, you know, we use the roads, you know, vice versa. Are there any services that the, and this is anything off the top of your mind, any, any services that unincorporated county residents can use of city services that are not, and, and vice versa, for incorporated city residents using the county, that are maybe not accounted for or something that, that they're, they're thinking that they need a higher amount of income or revenue from?
Well, obviously, the city services aren't extended outside the corporate balance, right? So our, our services aren't extended after their taxpayers. But there's obviously that argument that has been made for years about, you know... about, you know, city residents do drive into the county. We drive on county roads, right? There's been arguments about, you know, you know, utilization of the jail. There's been arguments about utilization of the animal shelter, the EMA ambulance service. You know, I can go down to 911 dispatch service. But I always come back to, yes, I agree. The city of Noonan residents are benefiting from those countywide services that you offer, but we're, again, we're paying for them in a milage rate.
We're county residents as well.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. We appreciate it. Long road ahead. We're there for you. Okay, the next item on the agenda today is under new business. This is a presentation of the 2022 AGC Build Georgia Award. And Mr. Rob Reagan is here today to make this presentation. Mr. Reagan is with New South Construction. Mr. Reagan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. New South Construction is a, is a member of the Associated General Contractors of Georgia. And, and each year, the association does a Build Georgia Award. And we submitted the, the parks project because it was, it was such a unique project. It's an, it's an incredibly beautiful project. The, there's, there's a whole list of criteria to submit on, and, and I'm not going to go into all those, but one that I'm probably the most proud of is, is one of the criteria is, is the, is the customer relationship that we have with our, with the city and that we do take care of our projects and whenever something happens. But with all that said, we did win first place. And here's a, and we have a plaque here for you guys today that, that shows the first place award. So thank you for your trust in us and, and on many projects. So thank you.
And I will hang this right up next to my skateboard. And I'm not making light of this. This is a grand award. We appropriated the money, the staff, and New South did the work. We, we don't do things here in the city without the staff support and without the staff leadership and our employees, city employees, being the heart of what we do. So we appreciate the award very much. The park is used all day, every day, from dawn till dark. And so thank you for what you did to make that a reality. And again, thank you to our staff and employees for what they did to also make it a reality. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda today then is a public hearing. This is an application for alcohol beverage license AA Noonan LLC. This is to Franklin Road. The reason for this is new owner, a new, a new license. So I'll open a public hearing at this time and ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak to the issue of alcohol beverage license at 2 Franklin Road, AA Noonan LLC. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask if there is a representative here from this company. You're here today, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Ms. Megan, is everything in order? All right, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
So moved.
Motion is second. We adopt that application or approve the application as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. The next item on the agenda today is the presentation of the 2023 Noonan Center budget. Ms. Moore, how are you today?
I am wonderful. I hope y'all are. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for having me. And Mr. Phillips and Mr. Craver for having us here. Just for the benefit of the audience, I wanted to say that we are actually owned by the city but managed by the Noonan Convention Center Authority. So our authority, we are not city employees. We're actually authority employees. And people, a lot of people don't know that, but I want to say that to say that our board has already approved the budget that we're presenting to you today for approval. I apologize for the document. QuickBooks is a wonderful thing, but it won't give you the reports you need. So it's kind of a self-made document that'll help you get the, the information you need to see the budget of where we are currently financially and where we're planning to be in 2023. The 2023 budget's projecting 105,000 more in earned revenues than the previous year. I can tell you that since COVID, people are ready to get out and do things. And from here to the end of the year, we are really slammed, which is a wonderful problem to have. You'll notice that the expenses are 52,000 more, and that is in direct correlation. The more events you have, obviously, the more your expenses go up. We are projecting a net income for next year of $56,440. I did want to point out in your financials, we did receive the ARPA funding. And for ease of operation, we did split the personnel cost. You'll see personnel salaries and wages. And then at the bottom of that category, you would see personnel ARPA salaries. And that is really just to give a clean accounting of where that money was spent so that it's clear. So to get the total personnel cost, you would add those two line items. The other thing I wanted to mention is next year, we will be 10 years old. It's hard to believe that we have been around for 10 years. I, I really started very young when I was over there. And we're going to, and I've mentioned this to you before, but we're going to have two portions of a celebration to celebrate our 10 years in operation and 10 years of success. The first part is we're going to join in conjunction with the LINK event on April 21st, and that will be open to the public. And we're going to showcase the Noonan Center and our new gazebo in conjunction with that event and have some games and inflatables for kids, some type of music event down at the gazebo. And also, we'll advertise those events to, to get the public there. We're also going to have a private celebration dinner for existing clients that have, through the 10 years, repeat clients, what we call them, repeat clients, and continue to do business with us, which is a showcase and a representation of the excellent staff that we have. You don't come back where you don't get good service. So kudos to the staff on that. But we also will have, it will be open to new clients. We've been targeting the, you know, Fayetteville market, trying to get Fayetteville companies into Noonan to do their events. We've had some success with that, but those that we're still trying to get, we'll invite to that dinner, as well as the dignitaries and the vendors that have worked with us through the, through the 10 years. But you'll see a line item in the budget that says 10-year celebration and the amount of $35,000 to host that dinner and the LINK event. And I am available for any questions that you might have.
Anyone?
No, I just want to tell Carol what a great, great job she's doing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Well, I appreciate it. I only look good because I have very wonderful staff. So thank you to them.
We know the feeling. And speaking of looking good, the place, it always looks great.
Thank you.
It looks as new as it did from the first day when we opened it. So thank you.
Well, thank you. That is the one thing that when we hired, I hired operations, the, the first day on the job, that they were told is this building needs to look as good 10 years from now as it does this very day. And they have taken it to heart and done that. We will probably be looking at updating the decor, though, because you have to stay current. So that will be on the radar in the near future.
It looks good, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve the budget? So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the Noonan Center 2023 budget as presented. Any discussion? All those in, in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. The next item is a consideration of intergovernmental agreement between Coeita County to purchase a Westnet first-in-fire-station alerting system. Chief, how are you today?
I'm good. How are y'all? Okay, this is an agreement that was briefly, that would, quickly, that was brought to us in early 2020. We went and looked at, Mr. Phillips and I, we went to the 911 center and toured it. This system here is requested by Coeita 911. Director Terrell had requested it to be more uniform. This is what the Coeita County Fire Department uses. And they also dispatch us. This is pre-programmed. It should decrease our response times. So it allows their dispatchers, when they take the call, they go ahead and push the programmed call. If it's a medical call or whatever, it dispatches that station while they stay on the line with the person that's calling in. So it doesn't have that delay. So they can gather information and tell us as we're responding to the call that we're going to. So as you know, in 2020, this was put on the back burner because the tornado hit us in March because we were getting ready to present this. And earlier this year, Director Terrell came back and presented it again. And this will really help them as far as their dispatchers go. And it will decrease our time. So we looked into it again, and now they are going to fund the whole install for us. And at first, we were going to split that cost, but they have agreed now to, to install it, install it for us, to refund us for that. And then we'll move forward with it if, if y'all allow that. So any questions?
Okay, I appreciate the offer. But this, this is a direct benefit to our citizens, correct?
It is. It's for us and, and for them. And since they do dispatch for us, it's going to help them to release more dispatchers for us. But it's also going to have the capability of decreasing our response times because it allows the pre-programmed call to go ahead and dispatch us while they are gathering information on the line with the caller. So there's not a delay.
So, chief, you, it's, it's a yes for you. I mean, it's a thumbs up.
It's a plus. And because it's uniform with their EMS, their, their fire department, and also the Chattahoochee Hills and Palmetto, when they, the whole program is going to be the same. It'll be uniform.
Mr. Phillips can see the look in my eye. He stood up, so.
Well, it, it took a couple of years to get this, actually, as Chief Francis said, in front of council. And when it was first brought to our attention, the request was for us to pay for it. And I brought up the issue that we just talked about, service delivery and, and taxation, and our residents are, are residents and taxpayers of Coeita County. I, I first thought we were going to receive this, and they initially told us they were going to use their ARPA dollars to install it. But if you look at the agreement, that shows that they're planning to use their loss funds to actually reimburse us for the installation cost. So the reason it is here in front of you is because I felt like now that they've offered, paid for the, to benefit the citizens of Coeita County. And our obligation, obviously, is we've got some ongoing maintenance that we have to do entirely inside of our stations. But that's operational to, to me. So with, with county offering to pay for the, for the upfront capital, I thought it was.
So the money is not coming out of general fund?
No, it's coming out of loss. Park, you.
Pretty, pretty certain it says in the agreement, their conditions.
Sure.
Yeah, from Level 2 loss proceeds, section 2.3.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
I just have a quick question. Since this ties in with the 911 center and all that kind of stuff, does this have any tie in with the police department also, or is this strictly fire?
This is strictly fire.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Is there a motion? Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you so much, chief.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. The next is an item that is a consideration of request to abandon public right-of-way a portion of Pope Street. Mr. Smith, how are you, sir?
Fine, Mayor and Council. This is a request that, even though it's just coming to you today, it's been a long time coming. We've been working with the property owners and the developer of a current townhome development, which is the east of the subject land, on this issue for a better part of a year. This request is basically to allow us to initiate this process. We're not asking you to abandon it today. We will come back later at another meeting. Once we've researched this a little bit more, make sure there's no utilities in the way. Engineering has looked at this and said we have no plans on continuing Pope Street at this point based on the Macintosh Parkway improvements that have been done. So what we're asking you to do is ask us to begin the process.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, let me have it. Is there a motion first, and we'll have a discussion. Is there a motion?
Yes, motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, question?
I know you said engineering said they have no intentions of extending Pope Street at any point, but is there an opportunity there for us to look at whether or not there would be any need for this? I, I just want to make sure that before we go abandoning the street or that we don't have future plans that could benefit from having this go through there.
That'll be part of the research we'll be glad to do and come back to you at the time. But initially, we don't. Hall Street and Pope Street, we have no plans, no private plans have been presented to the city to develop that beyond what it is currently.
But you'll include her suggestion?
Yes, we'll be glad to take a look at that as we research it further.
Due diligence. All right, okay. Anyone else? Got a motion? Motion is second. Call the question. All those in favor of initiating the process indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Smith. The next item on the agenda is for information only, a consideration of zoning ordinance amendments and refer to the Planning Commission. Although this says information only, it says to refer to the Planning Commission. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Is there a motion, a second to refer item O in our agenda today to the Planning Commission for their consideration? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you, Ms. Smith. The next item on the agenda is also for, really for information only. No, no motion needed here. This is a rezoning request, RZ 2022-11 by Sprayberries Barbecue, Inc. for 1.25 acres located at 30 Amelie Jack Boulevard. Request change from heavy commercial conditions associated with recent annuniation, asking to reduce a highway sign, setbacks from interstate property and side property lines. Again, information only. Next item on the agenda is also rezoning request, RZ 2022-12 by Southern Development LLC, 3.13, I'm sorry, 3.3 acres located at 420 Jefferson Street. Requested change from RS 15 to general commercial, asking to develop a food service container building. Again, this is for information only, no action needed. The next item on the agenda today is rezoning request, RZ 2022-10 by Daniel Lickety on behalf of Morana Construction, Inc. for 0.970 acres located at 170 La Grange Street from RS 15 to RU 7. This also is for information only, no action needed. The next item on the agenda today, I am going to recuse myself, and Mayor Pro Tim Raydeboz is going to recuse himself. Will I be asking Senior Councilmember George Alexander to handle this particular item? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Annex section request for 20, annex 2022-06 by George Rosenswag on behalf of Polte Group Home Company LLC and Green Top Road LLC. It's 163.61 acres located on Green Top Road. It's parcels number 0855086001 and 0855107002 and 0855086003 and the southern portion of 0855107003. It's a requested zoning of PDR Plan Residential Development District, and this is a decision to be referred to the Planning Commission. This will not be a, this isn't a public hearing.
I make a motion that we refer to the Planning Commission.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Return it back to you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Alexander. The next item on the agenda today is consideration of adoption of the City Council 2022 Retreat Report. Mr. Craver?
Mayor Brady, members of the council.
This body met on August 12th to consider a number of items under five general category topic areas. What I've prepared for you with staff support is a retreat report here that helps dictate how Mr. Phillips and I and our coworkers here at the city will work through those items that were agreed upon. So, we're looking for your guys' endorsement of this document.
Questions? Anyone? We were all there.
Well, great job of someone putting it together.
Is there a motion to adopt the report?
So moved. Second.
Motion of second to adopt the report is presented in discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Craver.
Thank you.
The next, under unfinished business, consideration of entering into an agreement with qualified firms to provide residential refuse and recycling service beginning January the 1st, 2023.
Yes, sir. Mayor Brady, members of the council, as Ray Norton, our Public Works Director, makes his way up here to answer questions you may have. We're here back in front of you with proposals from three firms. As you may recall, during your time at the retreat, you had asked staff to go back and confirm and reaffirm, if you will, pricing from the three original haulers. We did so. Those prices here are included in your packet. And then, Mr. Norton, Mr. Phillips and I have a recommendation to proceed with a certain hauler. I'm going to let Mr. Norton take us through that. Please note that while price is a consideration, so is service. And so, the recommendation on behalf of the city staff is to engage AM Waste, and that's based on not only cost, but also service, and our belief that they can provide the service that our citizens deserve. Mr. Norton?
Again, to restate what Mr. Craver said, we rescinded the award on June 14th, asked the vendors to reaffirm their prices. We solicited AM Waste, Coastal Waste, and GFL. We did receive those. If I can get this page turned here. And after reviewing them, there was a... We did... AM Waste was the one that we actually are recommending to, for the award, for the residential refuse and waste.
And for the councils, we do have members of AM Waste here in the room. If you'd like to ask any questions of them specifically, I'm sure they would entertain those questions.
Anyone?
I guess... Number one question that I have, should we choose to go with AM Waste, is the transition from GFL to AM Waste and the likelihood of going to a one container? I find that very intriguing.
Yeah.
You know, for a number, number of reasons, limited traffic on the roads, et cetera, one truck versus multiple trucks. I mean, just kind of the obvious, as well as some of the technical that they provide, you know, all those things that we discussed at the retreat. So, what does the transition look like? That's what would be my question.
I think there are... They're a two-part question. And so, thank you for asking both of those. I'll let Mr. Norton speak to the transition as the first part. And the second part is if, in fact, this body here decides that it would like to accept that proposal on the single can option, that's an action this body can take today.
The transition is... The timetable is very doable. I mean, we're right at the window where it's closing on us. But to get the assets on the ground, the cans, that sort of stuff, it is obtainable to have it swapped over come January 2nd.
And we have already initiated the hiring of certain city staff members to support that transition. We have one individual now working with us, and she's been with us for a few weeks now, that will support that. She has industry experience, and that's as a result of this body instructing city staff to bring billing in-house. So, that was a move that we had made early, and this position will support that transition.
Great, thank you.
Now, if this body wants to talk about the single can, or a can for just residential refuse, and a separate can for recycling, we can build that into how we proceed as a staff and with the contract.
Well, with what we discussed at the retreat, and of course, looking at the price difference between a two-can versus one can, you know, I by far think the one can is certainly the way to go for multiple reasons. So, I'll weigh in with that, and I don't know whether we can... Is that one motion to accept AM Waste and then to accept one container, or would that be two separate actions? That would be my question, if we want to move.
Well, we certainly...
Is there enough clarity in one motion?
Now, we need clarity in the motion as to whether we want to do the traditional two-cans, trash and recycling, or whether you want to do the one bin. Because AM Waste needs to get their cans over. So, therefore...
Sure. So, there could be one motion that included the one-can option.
Okay.
Yes.
Can I make that motion? Or do we want more discussion?
If you want to make that motion, I'm going to ask for discussion after you make it.
Right.
So, let's see if we get a second.
Okay. I'm going to make the motion that we accept the contract with AM Waste and with the one- container option.
Second.
Okay.
That'd be a second. Okay, wow.
Discussion. Mr. Craver, I think you had a question.
Yeah, so I've got some questions about that. Using the one-can service would require one truck. I know there's a lot of folks that you, you know, be happy, and one can would be more than enough. There's a lot of folks in the city that are going to require two cans. I mean, you know, let's face it, the recycle can really became almost like a second garbage can with all that much recyclable stuff, boxes, cans, everything else like that. So, the additional cost for a second can would be how much?
Five dollars.
Five dollars.
So, it'd be five dollars. So, using that, using this formula, and we talked about this a little bit previously, so the bill would go, I think it's like 2126 right now for one can. It'd be 2626, five dollars extra for two cans, still utilizing just one truck for both cans.
Well, I can't speak to the operation of AM Waste. I'd like to invite them to come. You can speak more intelligently, please, sir, to the operation, and they can answer your questions.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
But I want you to continue to... I think you didn't make the second point of your point.
So, I know we were talking about it, and you said it really well the other day. If you would like to feel free to state that very eloquently, please.
Yeah, I certainly will. And I think Councilman Craver does raise a valid question, and I think we have relayed that concern on to AM Waste. But, you know, just for the sake of the viewers and people in attendance and the rest of the council, I want to explain what that is. Basically, as Mr. Craver was saying, the one-bin option, the base price is 2126. Certainly, there's going to be households that need the extra volume, so they're going to go and request a second can. At the five dollars a can, it's 2626. All right, so you've got two cans. Let's say council will have selected the traditional one trash can and one recycling can. Then that price was 2471, which is, you know, what, a dollar and a half less than this one bin, but having the extra can. But what Mr. Craver's saying, with the traditional one trash can and the traditional one recycling can, you're servicing it with two trucks, two drivers. So, if you need... For people who need two cans, it doesn't seem to be as equitable as us staying with the traditional service. For those that need one can, it seems to make sense.
That's about it? Thank you for summing that up.
Yeah, hello. Hey, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Jason Zep. I work with AM Waste. Thank you for the opportunity here to take a minute and expand upon that. And I don't think I can tie it out as well as Mr. Phillips just did, and eloquently as he did, but that's correct to his point in increased costs and truck time, manpower, man-hours, fuel drives that price up, as well as when you look at the one-bin option and the diversion rate out of the one-bin option, there will be more trash included and more tons included in that option by adding the one bin, a secondary bin, if that makes sense, to the tune of potentially a ton per week if you did that for every home. And now, we've seen a very low percentage need that second container when we go to the one-bin option, if that helps answer your question.
So, I guess if you could...
It produces more waste, is what you're saying.
Produces more waste in the system, which adds more weight to the truck.
By having one trash and one recycle bin vice two trash bins.
Correct.
The truck fills up faster, and he's got to take it back and get it emptied and bring the truck back again on that same route.
There's a video out, and I watched it, and it's a wonderful video that the trash is picked up, and they take it to their site, and they recycle what they feel is recyclable. Believe it or not, there's some items that are recyclable, but it could be dirty, and it doesn't get recycled. And so, that's why I like this one trash can with the option of getting a second one for five dollars more. And they do all the recycling, and they do it better than I think anyone could.
I think also, we discussed at the retreat, that we were having issues with people actually recycling, and this one can helps or could promote more people recycling, or that, quite frankly, already makes stuff in trash. I mean, let's be honest, a lot of people do it already. So, and I just want a question for AM Waste there, and then Mr. Phillips should jump in here. Of the success rate with the one can in other cities that you have serviced, what do you find the most popular option that you found overall, and where most cities have had success?
It's the one-bin option. Certainly, you have, if you look at it just sheer numbers-based, you look at a 33% diversion rate of 100% of residents is a lot better than a 33% diversion rate of 55% participation of residents.
Thank you.
Well, the main thing my constituents are concerned about is having the garbage picked up. I don't... I really do care, but I really don't care what you do with it afterwards.
Sounds like the elephant in the room.
And most people have said, you know, we're paying for it, and we're not getting it. And also, I have experienced it both from calling, from emailing, everything else. I think the city's going to take over that response, but also, we'll... I assume our city people will be able to communicate with your people when we do have a problem, because that's been part of the problem, there's no ability to communicate anything.
Right.
I agree.
There's absolutely no doubt that we will be the initial point of contact for account setup and customer service, but if AM Waste also has their own customer service operation that they staff as well. But yeah, there's going to be also, even going a step further, there's going to be software communication. The next item, if you decide to go for this contract, there's a consideration of software, and it's a software that's standard in their industry. We went out and involved a utility billing software or a government billing software, and it sent the bill out just fine. But we want to do more than just send the bill out. We want to be able to interface with their operations and software with our operations and software, because when there's an account set up, guess what? They need to know that account's active. When there's account cancellation, they need to know that account's canceled. So, the more direct communication we can have and integration that we can have, it will do nothing but benefit our citizens, our customers.
Yeah, it makes the... It's like seamless, right? You're totally integrated.
Seamless as we hope.
Yeah, well, I mean...
We're not going to promise you perfection, but we're going to promise you ever can and an improvement.
Well, I thought perfection was a part of the contract, right? I'm just kidding.
Yes, Councilman Shell as well, to answer your question. I'm very intimately familiar with the Newnan area and garbage collection around the area. I'm a resident here, I live here, I coach sports here, eat here in the community, and have been doing business here for quite some time, the last six and a half years in the solid waste and recycling space, so I'm very, very intimately familiar with the collection in this town.
And the only other question I have then is, we've had citizens come in with solutions and all kinds of things, trying to make sure that we have the trash picked up. So, for us, I think the last big snafu we had with another client, with another vendor, by the way, was that they had this perfect storm, if you will, of shortage of workers and supply chain issues with their fleet and all of that. Do you, in this climate where we have supply chain issues and we have worker shortages, do you have a plan to deal with that so that we won't be in that position again?
Absolutely. Yes, I do. A full operating plan. In fact, we've got assets prepared, ready to deploy within the next 60 days if needed, and are ramping up and gearing up for a January 1 start, employees and equipment as well.
I guess not a concern with you. One of my concerns is what type of service will we get from GFL moving forward as, once this is... I mean, that's why I posed that question on the transition. I mean, it could be quicker than we anticipate, right?
Well, obviously, they're contractually obligated to continue the service. I know the representative in the room today is sitting here listening, probably isn't pleased with the conversation, but I think that probably... They're contractually obligated, and being a company of... Their stature, publicly traded, I think it's in their best interest to fulfill the contractual obligations of their contract at the end of the year. It probably won't look good in the industry if they don't.
We have every reason to believe they're going to do that.
I certainly hope so, but if not, we have talked about backup plans, how we could supplement services. It could be a challenge, I'll be honest, it could be a challenge for them to retain employees and drivers, et cetera, if they know that the contract is ending, and they know potentially they're not going to be moved to another part of the company. I get that. We may have issues, you know, as we get closer to January 1, if their employees make decisions. But transitions may not be easy, but I believe it's something, and, you know, that we have to make that decision.
Yeah, in the long run, this could be the best, yeah.
I think it's something that we have to... It could be a little bit of a struggle for a couple of months, I'm not going to be honest.
All right. Any other discussion? I do have a motion in a second.
If I could just... And this is just for the folks out, you know, watching this about the two-bin, one-bin thing. I don't need to beat the dead dog, because we definitely need our trash picked up. I think there's no debate about that. The price difference of, you know, one of each type of bin versus two of the same kind of one, you know, the single bin, could you explain just, you know, just a real, the high-level Reader's Digest version, if you will, of how that benefits the resident paying a dollar fifty more for that two-one-bins, two-one-bin service, if you will, by, so one trash, you know, the one rubbish and the one recycling?
So, if you look at the total, the total one-bin solution, they're effectively going to be diverting more waste out of the waste stream by using the two bins. There is a cost associated with that. If you look at the average household, they... We generate, the average household generates one ton of trash a year, about 45 pounds per time, every time we dump, right? We've found that when you put the secondary can out there and deem it recyclable, it's dirtier than what it would be normally. You can put a trash can out there and say it's one-bin solution, and we're going to be able to divert, just through our process, more recyclables from that can, if that makes sense.
Yep, it does.
It's a higher diversion rate at the end of the day, going through our process by doing that.
Using the hauler.
At a cost, there will be more, there will be more trash in there naturally by having the second can.
And that's what I get. I just want to make sure, you know, that everybody understands completely how this works. The other benefit to having one, the one-can system, is the less weather and terror on our roads, less traffic on our roads with having one truck vice two trucks, you know, tailing each other, basically.
Right, right, as well as also, you know, educating the citizens, and, you know, same-day pickup, keeping the city clean, uniform and orderly. That's all very important, and the safety as well down our streets. You know, people are not bobbing and weaving over, you know, two cans or something in the middle of the street. That's very important.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a couple of closing comments. Mr. Mayor won't be long. I think it's also important to know, other than, you know, customer service changes that are making, that there's actually some performance measures and actually requirement of a performance bond in this particular contract. So, we're doing a lot of things to secure and performance as much as we can. But I think it's also important to know that we want to make some system changes. You may remember a few months ago, we went from everyone being their trash and recycling and bulk and yard debris being picked up on the same day, to that being changed to multiple, to different days. But we've already had conversations with AM Waste. When we get into the contract, now, we're not going to guarantee it's going to be on the same day that you had, but we plan on going back to the four-day-a-week service where each house is serviced with all of their trash recycling, bulk and debris on the same day. Four-day-a-week service instead of two-day-a-week. It felt like the two-day-a-week put too much pressure on the contractor to try to service most of the city in it in one day. So, some of the things that worked, we're going to go back to, and some of the things that didn't work, we're going to change. And I think he spoke very education. Turning now in January, before we roll out the one-bin system, I think there's, we've got to educate. We've got to send out flyers, we've got to send out mailers. There are some videos on it. We've got to let our citizens know what this one-bin system is, because there's going to be questions. There are going to be people that are concerned, people that used to segregate their recycling trash that won't like it. But we've got to do some education. I think we do a good job, so, thank you.
Before we started, I said I had a motion, a second. I do not. We started this conversation, and Mr. Jones was willing to make a motion and needed some clarification on that. I don't believe we got there.
My motion was not clear?
Did we need clarification of the one bin?
Yes, I mean, I'm still making that same motion as to accept Am Waste and the one bin, that has not changed.
I'll call the question at this point. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda today is a consideration of entering into an agreement with a qualified firm to provide, provide the solid waste business management software services for what we just explained. Mr. Krikko?
Mayor Brady, members of council, Mr. Norton and I are prepared to answer questions you may have. Are some, some startup costs, they're explained in your agenda item, as well as an annual subscription service. This is not uncommon for software of this size and this type.
I do have a quick question. I see the initial cost, your one annual subscription is about thirty thou, a little over thirty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
What are the following, following years? Is there an automatic price increase? Do we know that?
There is a little bit of an escalator, yes, sir. It, but on average, you're going to be about thirty-two to thirty-four thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It's a five-year contract. The first startup is generally for building the system and content migrations, forty-six thousand and change.
I make a motion that we approve this?
Second.
Motion is second, we approve as presented for the business management software services for the, for the garbage pickup. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you very much. Consideration of due diligence agreement and letter of intent for Fifty-seven East Project.
Mayor Brady, members of the council, the document in your package should reflect all the comments, questions, and concerns that were expressed at the special call meeting in late August. Thank you, Mr. Sears, for your support in presenting this document. We can answer any questions you may have.
Anyone? Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve as presented, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you. The next is Twenty-One Berry Avenue owner updating request for extensions. Murray, how are you today?
Doing well, Mr. Mayor and council, hope you are. Yeah, this, this property was, was before you in the last meeting in August, and it's been continued. There was a quest, request by council before they, before you considered an extension request to have the, the lot cleaned and the debris removed, and Mr. Calderon has done that. He has, and since the last week, he's, he's had a crew frame up the, the rear of the property, the, the area that was damaged by fire, and has started installing a new roof. So, there is, there is work being, being accomplished. He is moving forward, and Mr. Calderon did want to, to ask, he is here and wanted to ask for an extension request.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, council members, how you doing today?
Thank you, thank you for being here today.
Thank you for the consideration for last time. I've been able to make progress, as you can see, it's actually more progress today than what the pictures show. One of the council members was going to grant me one, one hundred and eighty days. I like to take advantage of that, only because something, the news came about, about the railroad workers possibly striking that may affect supplies. I'm hoping it doesn't affect me at all, or any of us over here, something about food and certain goods that may happen this Friday. But I'm going also with the contractor's timeline that was outlined, I don't know if they, they were to get that, just to cover myself. I don't plan to use all that time, obviously.
Mr. Murray, I would ask you, are you comfortable with that one hundred and eighty day?
Yes, sir. Given, given the fact that he has done a good, a good bit of work in the last week to two weeks, he has cleaned the lot, and I believe he'll continue to, to do that, we're comfortable with that.
Is there a motion?
Can I?
Motion is second, we grant one hundred and eighty day extension for Twenty-One Berry Avenue. Any discussion?
I have, I have a question. Is there any way that we can request a ninety-day report or some visual accountability there as to?
I'd be happy to do that, I mean, I can, I can provide that if that's.
That would, that's what I wanted to.
This property would be on our regular status reports.
Yes.
All right.
Right. Okay.
That's all.
Motion is second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you. The next item on the status reports, thank you, sir, for being here today, various storm-damaged properties.
Yes, sir, I did want to provide a status report. The last report provided was in June, there's been several updates since then. All of these are storm damage except for Eighteen Berry Avenue, that was demolished by the owner. He has stated a desire to rebuild at some point, has not done that yet. But One Seventy-Eight Lagrange Street, One Fifty-Seven Lagrange Street, and Five Mink Hollow Court were all storm-damaged properties that were demolished by the owners. They've all indicated a, a desire at some point to rebuild, but they have not presented anything, to my knowledge, to the city yet. Twenty-One Johnson Avenue and Five Smith Street, the resolution deadline did expire. We're moving forward with demolition on those properties, they're being tested for asbestos now. Twenty-One Johnson Avenue is actually going to be funded by, the demolition of that property is actually going to be funded by Coweta Community Foundation. And those were moving forward and should be completed within the next two to three weeks, hopefully. Not, not part of the, the other, the other properties are moving forward, and we're, we're satisfied with the progress they're making so far. I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody has on any of those.
Anyone? No action necessary here, but if you have questions, comments.
And the last thing, there, there was, there are several properties that the city-owned properties, they're not, they were not before council, but they were city-owned, structures did, did need to be demolished, and those, those have begun. I've had several ask about that. One Hundred East Washington Street, Fifty Murray Street, Fifty-four Murray Street, and Sixty-two Murray Street have all been demolished. Seven Lee Street is in, was actually being demolished today, and there's two more that are pending. But, but those are, we are moving forward with that work, too, so.
Thank you, we appreciate that for. Any questions from anyone? Discussion, all right, thank you very much, we appreciate it. We'll move on on the agenda to visitors, request from Parks of Olmsted to put up banners, the neighborhood garage sale beginning October the ninth through the fifteenth, main entrance. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, we approve as presented, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The next item, continuation of a request from Caleb Duke on behalf of Tim Stout Group to close South Court Square, the street and parking to host a movie screening on October the twenty-first. Yes, if you'll come forward, please. State your name for the record.
Hey, how y'all doing? My name is Caleb Duke, and I'm here on behalf of Tim Stout Group. So, we just wanted to shut down the South Court Square to do a movie downtown, just to give back to the community. It'll benefit the, the businesses downtown, all the restaurants and things like that.
Okay, so, the question last week, or last month, was whether or not you had contacted those businesses on, on the south side of the Court Square who were open during, or after the six P.M. hour. Have you done that? I think it's the final shot.
Yes, sir, we have, everyone's been in favor for it.
Okay. Staff recommendation, we've got anything going on here?
Yeah, we have not heard otherwise, so I guess the recommendation would be to proceed. This outfit has done a similar type program in the past. We will note in talking with our chief of police, we'll likely have to start closing that road, probably two to three hours earlier, probably before the workday's over. So, hopefully, we'll have this gentleman's support, Tim Stout's office support, as it's related to putting up signage and making sure our business owners are aware of an earlier-than-normal closure. We can't just close it five minutes before the movie starts, as you would.
Absolutely not. And that's a Friday night.
Yes, sir.
I understand, yeah, thank you. All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve as presented, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, thank you for being here today, we appreciate it very much. Okay, that finishes our regular agenda. Is there anyone here who has come to the meeting who has something off-agenda, a request off-agenda? If you'll come forward and state your name for the record, please, thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmen.
If you'll come up to the microphone. That is a little sexy.
Good afternoon, councilman, I'm Mayor Brady. I'm Tina Melson, finally you get to meet me. This is Kay Taylor, she's a resident of Pinson Street, and she has her grandson, she can tell you more about. Okay, my grandson, his name is Maderius Gibbs. And we was asking for a request because he's, as you see, he's a basketball player. And he started playing basketball at three years old at the Verona Center on Pinson Street. And from there, you know, he went to, he went to, he graduated from East Coweta. And from there, he went to Texas Southern University. He graduated, played on the basketball team. And from there, he went to professional basketball over, across seas to China, from China to Egypt, from Egypt to Vietnam, where he's playing now. So, he got the MVP of the year, and he's, the team is on, they made the playoff. So, he will be here on the twentieth of September. And when he leave here, he's going back to Egypt to play in the playoff games. So, we was asking for a request to, if, you know, if you all could help close half portion of Pinson Street, because I wanted to give him a little parade. And, and I also wanted to show the other kids that's in the community, the young kids, that if he could do it, then they could also do it. It would only be a couple of hours, just like two hours, from three to five. And we talked to the chief, and he said that with the hour approval. And we know this is last minute, we didn't know what, when he was going to be able to catch his flights back to Georgia.
Mayor Brady, if I may ask a question, between what intersecting streets, ma'am, if you don't know?
At the top of McIntosh, Pinson, start at the top of Martin Luther King. And to the intersection of Savannah Street, right there at that stop sign, because at the end right there, and he'll go into the Verona Rosetta Center and, you know, make a little speech to the, the kids that goes there.
Okay, that's, that's actually next a week from today.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, chief? Hello, chief?
These nice ladies came by the office and spoke with me, and if, if this body agrees, by all means, if we can make this work, we'd be glad to help them out and, and make, make this event go through. I think we can handle it on our end.
Sure, okay. First of all, congratulations to your.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, done, he's done really well. So, logistically, we've heard that we can make this happen. It's unusual for a request to come off-agenda that we do something like this. So, is any discussion or questions of what we're, what we're being asked?
No, I'd say, go for it.
I'll make that motion if you. Okay.
Because I can't remember the days we just talked about with another person. No, I, I got that, I'm just saying, we had a, another.
No, no, no.
It doesn't, okay.
So, this is three to five on the twentieth?
No, he'll be here on the twentieth, and I was thinking about the Saturday after the twentieth, I think will be the twenty-fourth. The twenty-fourth from three to five.
Okay, so it's not the twentieth, it's not a week from today?
No, he'll be home on the twentieth.
Okay, I was understanding, three, from three P.M. to five P.M.
Yes.
On the twenty-fourth. Okay, is the roster center available? Have you already checked for availability?
Not yet, I was going to. I talked to him, I talked to him, and he said it's available, and that the kids usually be outside with the ball, with the goal, with the basketball goal and stuff, and that. He's welcome to talk to them.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I'll make a motion for the twenty-fourth to close Pinson from the designated areas, and from the time that you had said, and whatever time the chief needs to close it.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And one, one other quick, I know we have a motion for, for, could you, usually, we, we ensure that whoever's asking for this, they contact all the homeowners so that they know well in advance, because of not having access getting in and getting out, potentially. Make sure you please let all the, everybody up and down the street know.
I sure will.
Well, they'll all probably be there, won't they?
Okay, is, I have a motion, I don't have a second.
A second.
Motion, I have a second. Any other questions or discussion of this issue? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great time, thank you. Okay, anyone else off-agenda today?
No thing.
Anyone from council? Okay.
Not at this time, I got a bunch of stuff that I'll wait, I'm just kidding.
Thanks so much. Okay, we don't have a need for an executive session, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
Motion is second to adjourn, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.